Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
I'd like to call the Select Board meeting at 6:00 PM on September 21st on Monday. First item is to adopt the agenda. Do we have any additions or questions on the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt it as presented.
So move.
You've got to tell me, I can't catch this.
Alan. I make the motion.
Alan made the motion, I think, was it Stan?
No.
John.
John, second.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then we adopt the agenda. The next thing is to approve the minutes of September 7th. Do we have any additions or corrections for these minutes?
I've got a couple. Page. Middle of the very first paragraph, it said that's still leaving 125,000 paving. It seems like a lot of money. It may be accurate, but it seemed like a lot.
Well, that was what was reported, so I can't change that. If you want to change it, you can.
No.
Okay.
And then. On the third page. Second paragraph down from the top that starts vast trails. A second sentence says, "Tim Morton, that there could be conditions." Maybe Tim Morton said that. A second sentence down in that first paragraph.
Item seven, I don't know where you are. I have no idea.
Third page, first paragraph, second sentence, uh, second sentence down. It says, "Tim Morton, that there could be conditions." Maybe he said.
I don't have that on mine.
I didn't either.
Okay, I see it. It's on page two. Page two.
Yeah.
Tim Morton said that. Okay.
Okay.
Got it.
I have another one down. I'm trying to remember why I'm, oh. Like the fifth sentence down said, "Select Board agreed," and says, "Al Sands made a motion, and it was second by Al Sands." Sounds a little crooked.
Trying to get stuff done.
Oh, I understand.
Okay, where, I'm sorry. Where, oh, there it is.
Same paragraph.
Yeah.
Okay, let me, okay, let me look at my minutes one time.
Sounds like the federal government here.
Yeah.
I think I seconded it.
Well, I'll look, let me look at that, at my minutes, because all that.
Yeah, it might have been Kathy.
I think I seconded it.
I think you did, Kathy.
Oh, Kathy seconded it.
I think I did.
Why, it's coming back to me.
Yes, that's correct. That's what I remember too.
All right. Do we have any other additions or corrections?
Yeah.
Al?
On, no, I still got something else on paragraph number 14. The Select Board meeting, when Monday follows on a holiday or falls on a holiday?
Falls on holiday.
Paragraph 14.
Falls.
Falls, yeah.
I'm done.
Alan, do you have anything?
I have Stan. The only other one I got is page three, item 10.
Item 10.
We already made. Later on, it says, "Second by Al Sands to give Tim Morton." The Tim should be capitalized.
Yeah, got it.
Thanks.
Any others? If not, somebody make a motion to adopt the amended minutes of September 7th?
Okay. So move, second.
Okay, you got that, Bill?
John and, and.
And Stan?
John and Stan.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Um, the warrants were down there. Um, I, when I was down there this morning, everybody had signed it, but I think, I forget, Kathy, I don't think, did you sign them?
Yeah, I did sign.
Warrants have all been signed, yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, so that's all approved. Okay. Uh, the Brattleboro. The Brattleboro.
Whoever his phone is on or wherever his mic's on with the phone, please turn it off.
The Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation has a little, um, story to tell us, so.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I appreciate it. I realize you have a long agenda, and we're all still trying to experiment with how to communicate with Zoom in a way that doesn't add to the fatigue everyone's already feeling on Zoom. So, um, thanks for having me. I'm Jen Stromston, I'm the Director of Programs at BDCC. Um, and we thank you for your funding of SEVIS, the Southeast Vermont Economic Development Strategies. Um, the simplest way that I understand what the difference is between SEVIS and BDCC is that everything I do, which has to do with programming and not like real estate and very basic business retention, is because SEVIS exists. So, most regional development corporations in Vermont, everyone gets baseline funding of about $108,000 a year, and that usually means there's like a person who tries to keep businesses from leaving, and maybe does some real estate. And, and we have, over the years, sort of identified the need to be more proactive about the economy, to worry about, you know, the formation and the growth and the health of small businesses, work in high school, all sorts of things, because otherwise, we're kind of at the mercy of like what, the cards that are being dealt to rural areas, you know, frankly. And, um, and that does worse or better, town by town, but overall, Southern Vermont and Wyndham County, it's not been going in our favor. Um, and so, you know, that's basically what we do in a nutshell, is we kind of take a look at the data and we say, "What's happening? We're losing labor force. We need to keep more young people here. We need to get more people here. We need skills that fit the jobs that we have here. How do we develop programs around that?" So, that's the shortest way of sort of describing. Um, and the only way to do that is to really go out and ask for more state and federal grants and private philanthropy. And one of the most important things that municipal funding does is it gives us sort of the seed money for that. Every time we apply for something, we have to bring money to the table. And that is critical funding that we take out and leverage. So, we, we spend some of the municipal funding money on staffing directly for programs, but a lot of it is basically take, and we go figure out, well, we need an internship program, we're gonna bring this to the state and say, "Will you match this through Department of Labor funding, so that we can actually have a person who spends time on internships and recruitment?" Um, so that's, that's kind of what happens to your money. Um, last, this past year, 16, we asked every town to fund us at $3 a person. Um, and at this point, uh, last year, 16, we just got Brattleboro, it's just finished this past weekend, um, so 16 of the towns have funded us. And, um, this past year, and, um, 80% of the residents of the voters in the county. Um, so, that's pretty exciting, but it's always sort of a struggle to help people understand how this relates to them directly. Normally, when I come visit a Select Board, um, I walk in and I hand you all folders, and it has lots of little flyers about our programs, Young Professionals, and we Welcome Wagon, work that we're doing to help welcome newcomers to the area. You know, our community facilities, we help communities with things like fire stations or, um, you know, community halls. Um, and I don't, I'm not doing that, I didn't send all those electronically, because honestly, you can find that information on our website, and I feel like, again, we're all getting kind of saturated with digital stuff and a little bit overwhelmed with the number of attachments and emails that we're getting. So, um, I really just wanted to touch on the things that we sent in advance, um, which were the SEDs, a link to the SEDs, which is the Strategic Regional Plan. Um, it really is how we try to discern what to do with ourselves over the long term. We make decisions at our organization, sort of, you know, three, four, and five years in advance about the direction we want to go in, um, and then, you know, we build towards that. So, the strategic plan, not everyone, it's not everyone's bag to read things like that, but it's, um, it's really, I wouldn't, I love about it, it's sort of the principles that it espouses, it's really very people-centered, um, and it's sort of about, it's not about growth to change, it's about preserve the vibrancy and character of, of the region from, you know, working workforce and small businesses and community health. Um, another thing I want to draw your attention to is our annual report that I attached. It's the last year one. Um, I'm almost done writing this year's annual report, and I can give you little tidbits from that. It's, um, just normally our cycle is that I could have that done at the end of mid-October. Um, so I'll share that to all of you as soon as it is complete in a few days. Um, one of the things that we're really trying to capture the essence of is, what a weird year this has been. Um, we have a lot of programming, and much of it was halted because of COVID, uh, because it involves meeting directly with, you know, high schoolers and workforce and small businesses. I want to explain, um, what we did with that energy during that time. We, we actually pivoted all of our program staff who couldn't continue their work to just be connecting with small businesses. And so, through COVID, we worked with, um, 444 small businesses. I mean, everything from just staying in touch and getting them onto webinars to kind of learn things about, maybe they want to apply to PPP and idle or a loan or whatever, uh, through like really working deeply with some of them, um, through some of our USDA-backed lending, um, helping some of them, a couple of them right now with succession planning, some folks who think this is the last straw, and they're ready to get out of their business, and helping them do that transition. So, that's, small business has really been at the heart of what we've been doing the last few months. We're back up and running with most of our programs in a, in a variety of levels, but like our high school programming is, you know, kind of waiting on the schools to be ready for us to come in, whatever that looks like. Um, our community-based work, we've done more webinars and trainings, but we recognize that, uh, it's something that's usually very workshop and training-based, and we go around working lands, financing working lands conference, housing conferences, connectivity stomachs. Those are, oh, we can only do so much of that online, frankly. The participation for people who are needing to do their work, their civic engagement, their service, you know, this kind of Select Board meetings online, um, we're not trying to do every single thing online. We're, we're shifting to more kind of one-on-one assistance to towns and things like that. So, um, all that to say, you know, I have some show and tell, like I always would if I came, like, this is the sort of thing that illustrates our high school program, the skill and sequence, and it demonstrates, we're trying to get kids from ninth grade from just like dreaming about what they want to be, all the way through the point where, when they graduate high school, they are polished and professional and know how to put together a resume and tie a tie, and, you know, understand some of their career options. Um, and, you know, this is something that we're, we're really proud of, because it captures, um, the desires of many educators over the years who've given kids to us, but not having sort of a holistic program, so we've been helping them build a holistic program, um, to help kids get to that place. I'm not sure that, um, folks understand the urgency of this, but the, the stats in Wyndham County are that, uh, four years after high school graduation, um, like a third of kids have a college degree. You know, so there's this whole issue where kids leave high school, and about two-thirds of them, a little more, seem like they're heading off to college. There's a loss over the summer, um, and by the fall, about half of them are heading to college, and within a few years, a lot of them have left school. And they may complete it later on, but that's just, it's really important to us that we understand, we help understand that our work is data-driven. And, you know, we're not pushing career development in the schools just because we think, you know, it's a nice thing to do. Um, we are really concerned about what's happening with kids who are not getting enough content and training around how to pursue different career goals. Um, and we're also seeing good jobs go begging. We're seeing jobs in manufacturing and production and in healthcare fields and things like that. So, um, so we're really trying to catch kids up, not just with the idea that they need to think more carefully and prepare more carefully for careers, but also with very specific examples of pathways they can pursue to make a living, more than a living wage, make a good wage, you know, here in Wyndham County. Um, I, I will stop talking. I'm a person who could just talk forever, um, about our programs, but I do want to just ask if there's, are there any questions? And I'd also love to know what people would like to know more about, um, because I may or may not be the person, but I want to make sure that anyone who is interested in programs for communities or small businesses or whatever, um, is connected with the correct personnel organizations. I'll pause for a moment.
I have a question.
I'd like, I'd like to know more information about specifically Grafton. You've mentioned a lot about businesses, um, career opportunities, uh, webinars. What are you doing for Grafton?
Yeah, so there's two, there's two answers to that, right? So, so one of them is, we run a thing called the Southern Vermont Economy Project, and it's just about community stuff. So, we do trainings and webinars, because what we, for that project, like the measure of success is whatever you want to get done, getting done faster and better. So, whether that's some kind of local project, you know, is it a town hall renovation? Is it a fire station? Is it some other, is it a childcare facility, like something that's a community project, for instance? Um, so we did a great financial management a couple months ago. I don't know if anyone from Grafton did it. I don't remember that there was someone from Grafton on there. Um, I was in it, but I don't remember whether that was the case. Um, we will be doing our second, uh, second grant writing training in, I think in December. Um, we, and that, and these are all open and free, or we charge a really nominal fee, and frankly, people can just ask for scholarships, because we want people to actually show up. Um, and, and these are basically meant for non-couple people, board members, town officials, to try to help make sure everyone has as many of the skills that you need to get things done. But the other kind of secret agenda in a lot of the things that we do with that program is to get your town and your projects more directly connected to like funders and state programs and things like that. So, we always invite the folks, you know, Preservation Trust or Vermont Housing Conservation Board, whomever can actually help get those things done. That, that to us is really important, because we, our goal at BDCC and SEVIS in many ways is to just see more resources flow into this region, right? We want to see your town get more of the kinds of, whether it's working lands dollars or, you know, dollars for that, whatever, that local project from the USDA. So, that's, that's really important to us. Um, and I always think we can be doing more. I mean, this project is about two and a half years old, three years old, the community facility, the, this, that, the Southern Vermont Economy Project. Um, it's something where like every time we do an event, someone comes and they're like, "I didn't know you had this thing." You know? So, so we have all these webinars and trainings, and that's one piece of it. A different way of thinking about it is, um, you know, it's the high school work, I mean, that is touching, you know, specific, and I didn't, I don't have the this year's data. I'll have this by February, um, sort of by town of where kids are coming from, but, you know, by our town report time in January, February, I'll have from the schools breakdown of like kids by town that are in our program. So, um, so I don't have that for you yet, um, but I recognize that that is like very, you know, those kids are the kids that matter to you, right? The, the other thing I'm gonna say is, like, I know that there's not a ton of employment in Grafton, but if you're like any other town in Southern Vermont, about half the households in your town rely upon employment outside of your town. You know, and that's, that's not true of everyone, but the reality is that the jobs that people go to are, you know, in Bellas Falls, they're in Springfield, they're in Brattleboro, they're over in New Hampshire. Um, and that's really a lot of what we work on. I mean, we work with 400 and something companies, well, 500 and something companies this past year, and they represent a third of the employment, you know, a third of the jobs in the whole county. So, you know, I, sometimes, I will get lists from some employers, you know, and they'll tell me, "Omega Optical or Chroma." Like, they'll give me a list and they'll tell me where people live, and I'll get examples of things like that. Most employers will not give me a list of exactly where everybody lives, but, you know, the reality is that most of their employees don't live in the town that they're located in. They're coming from all over. They're coming from, you know, frankly, the, the communities where people prefer to live.
I have something for you. Uh, my name is Rich Stromston. I worked on the Career Center in Brattleboro as the Manufacturing Engineer Instructor.
Yeah.
My second year. Uh, either I want your contact, or do you deal with Linda Quay down there already?
Yeah, no, absolutely. One of my workforce person, my main workforce person, Alex Beck, is, he's on their advisory committee, he's been, you know, he's been part of helping them sort of develop, like this upcoming, you know, they kind of had to retool everything because of the new Perkins stuff. Um, so, and what we do, um, so SEVIS is very research and sort of information-oriented, so I run this little project called the Hiring Needs Assessment Project, because we don't, the federal data's not very helpful, the state data's not very helpful, because it's not very specific to our region. Um, so, we do about every three, four months at this point, a new survey. So, we did a hiring, um, survey for manufacturing and production, and what we found is that despite the trends of sort of being flat in employment in manufacturing, because of retirements and the need to replace people, there are hundreds of openings right now in good, well-paying jobs, right, for which people need some training, like at the Career Center, or minimal training, so they can get it on the job. Um, we just finished one for CDL drivers, you know, people can start at $18 to $28 an hour. There are gonna be 78 openings.
Yep, I think we lost her.
Wonderful products.
Jim, we missed part of that. Jim, we missed part of that.
Yeah, Jim.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you kind of froze up.
I'm sorry. Um, so, so yeah, we, we kind of decide on that research in conversation with the Career Center and the Department of Labor and other folks about like where we're seeing some good job opportunities, and then we go directly to employers and we survey them, and we say, "How many openings do you have right now? What are the skill sets needed? How many are you gonna have over the next two and five years?" And then we share that information with the Career Center, the high schools, the Department of Labor. So, that's like one of the things that we do, is we get really specific local research from employers, and then share that. It's just like one example. Um, but, yeah, I mean, the Career Center is like the place where a lot of this has to happen, but they're not really given, you know, the sort of latitude to do that kind of research, for instance. So, that's something we can do to help them. Um, and then we have sort of relationships with GS Precision and things, and then they really developed that, um, together. My workforce person has really helped foster that connection with GS Precision. Um, and we have that relationship with GS Precision because of our real estate side. That's how we developed that, like, we helped them develop their facility, and so that kind of gave us an entree into the workforce conversation, so. So, that gives you an idea of like the partnership there.
Good. I know the Career Center has made a significant investment in manufacturing, uh, so we're hopeful, we're hopeful that we can.
Yeah.
Get these trained up and out the door and make them some, some money.
They make good money. They're making good money. They're making better money than people who went to get a, you know, liberal arts degree. I'm telling you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any, any questions or whatever? I, I just have kind of a follow-up to Kathy's question about Grafton. When, um, when I looked at the information that was sent to us, I was kind of surprised that, that Grafton's, Grafton's growth was low, but for other, other towns in, in Wyndham Regional, I was surprised that we actually had some growth. I was amazed on how many towns actually didn't have any growth whatsoever.
Right, or shrunk.
And, um, and one of the, one of the things that I think, and, and I, I know you work with the Wyndham Foundation, I think, I hope you do.
Yeah, boss does.
And I was talking to a fellow selectman today, and, and, um, the Wyndham Foundation is the key to Grafton's success and growth, because they're the largest employer.
Yeah.
And, and I had a meeting with the president, uh, or the CEO, um, and, um, they have a situation right there, and I don't know how you can help them, but I'm gonna bring it up, is they need to revise their Act 250, because their, there's, the pond down there is being unutilized.
Right.
And there's a group of people who want to put up a pavilion to do, um, a farmer's market and, and, uh, make the concert into a home weekend and do other things down there. And they're really the only ones that can really help Grafton economically.
Yeah.
And, and I know that you can't, you can't get the Act 250, they have to make that decision, but I would hope that, that, you know, maybe there could be some guidance from, from you or from others that, to let, to let them wade into this nightmare of this Act 250.
Yeah.
Because they said that the Act 250 permit, I think, goes back to 1979. They're allowed three events, and two of the events don't even take place anymore. So, it needs to definitely be, but, but they're the ones that would give Grafton some growth.
Absolutely, and I shouldn't, I'm sorry, I should like named the elephant in the room, because the Wyndham Foundation is the elephant in the room. So, so, and that's really, I think, um, at the last, like, we're meeting, visit, that was my boss, the Director of BDCC, Admiral Keenan, and he's really the person, and he is in close contact with them, and that's, that's the level of relationship. I mean, frankly, when you have an employer of that level of importance, that kind of business retention and assistance work, that's, that's what my director spends his time on, and, and he's very aware of those issues. And, I mean, I will, I always, I report back all of this to all the relevant program staff, so I will, you know, make sure. Um, but I know from what we talked about after his last visit that, you know, he's aware of that, and I know that he stays in close contact with both the Wyndham Foundation, and I think that it's, you know, important to understand that. I mean, that's our baseline, like, we are focused on those big employers. I think when I come to towns, I want to sort of make the point that that's not the only thing we're thinking about. You know, we're wondering what's gonna happen to the youth in your town, we're worried about people of small businesses and other employment, but yeah, absolutely. The Wyndham Foundation is not just critical to you, it's actually to the region. I mean, it's, it's, it's bigger than Grafton, as you know, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
If nobody has anything else, I, I thank you for giving us the presentation, and, uh, hopefully, it's, it's a, it's a help to the Select Board and to others to understand what you do.
Thank you, and I urge people to follow up with any, any questions or thoughts, and, like, if I have more, yeah, sort of going into the town report time at some schools and so, you get it.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a great evening.
I saw Danny, is Danny on yet? Oh, you are. How are you doing? Are you surviving?
Yep.
Good. So, what, well, you want to, you want to give us a little report, if, if you can?
So, I haven't really been at work much since the last meeting, but I do know the paving is done. Mike and I went up and checked on it, said it come out good. Um, the 911, that's the bill on Anderson Road.
I could just simply say, we're not gonna do that till after the election. It might cause too much, and it might even invalidate some votes. We're not gonna take the chance, so we're not gonna do anything with Anderson Road or any other addresses until after the election.
Um, as far as the work schedule, we're gonna be Wednesday back up in the Village Park, working on getting the road roughed in, um, hopefully Wednesday and Thursday. Um, we got a couple more cohorts, and Mike, this last week, has been working on some of the Better Back Road Grants on Cabell Road.
How's the roadside mowing, is that almost completed?
David, it's just about done with that. Be real close by the end of the week of having that all done.
Hey Danny, what was the bill on that tractor? Did that somebody come out, do all that work here? Did that machine go somewhere?
On the, over the rail mower?
Yeah.
When did you get the bill? Just, just recent come in?
We just sunk it today.
Oh, wow, that was done probably back beginning of the summer. They came right through the shop to do that.
That was like $800 or something like that?
Yeah. We, uh, they came in, readjusted the clutch in it, and we had some electrical problems going on.
Oh, you did that then?
In the mower, that we couldn't figure out, and I gotta have, that was on the tractor end of it. I gotta have someone to come on the mower, because we got a couple of release valves that have been giving us problems, and we've played with them, but we can't seem to get it figured out.
Hey Danny, what was the second thing before, uh, that work on the better roads? What road were you working on before?
We're gonna be working up the Village Park.
Yeah, okay. Oh, I see, oh, yeah, that's what you said, okay, thank you.
And we got a couple. And we got a couple other, a couple of cohorts, two cohorts left to do. One on Eastman Road and one on Fisher Hill yet to do this year.
Okay.
And the other thing I have is somebody had been into the garage over the weekend. I don't know who, but the lights were left on and the guy said they noticed that some of the stuff in the shop was not left the way it was when they left. So I don't know who it is that got the key, but someone had been in there over the weekend.
Well, there's not too many people have the keys. I know I have one, um, and I, I didn't go up there. Stan, do you have a key?
No.
No, Alan, do you have one?
I do, but I was in, in the North Lake.
Right. So I think it's important to figure out who, who's gonna get in there because Kim has a list of all the keys.
Does, does the cemetery have one?
No, I don't think so.
Was Eric in there at all for EMD checking out when we were down with Vito?
Not that I know.
We didn't notice anything missing, but, you know, the lights were on this morning and some of the doors on the equipment were left open. So just a good heads up on it, I guess, for now.
Well, Kim, maybe you should go, you know, meet with Danny when he comes back or something and see who's got these keys.
Yeah, I'll go through the list tomorrow.
I'll be back to work on Wednesday and Thursday and part of day Friday.
Okay, I'll talk to you on Thursday about it.
All right, sounds good.
Anything else for Danny? If not, let's go on to, uh, Kim with the clerk's report.
Well, I'm happy to say that the bills went out and money's coming in. So I'm much more relieved, um, we'll be okay. And, um, pretty much during the BCA meeting, gave an update on how elections are going. And for those
Thanks.
Who, um, are here that were not on the BCA, that the election will be held at the Brick Meeting House. Um, oh, I did receive the grant for digitizing our records. I'm going with the COT system. It's called COT system. Um, and what it entails is, um, scanning all of my land records as far back as we can go. And once they're scanned, they go live onto a website called Record Hub. And it allows researchers to be able to sit at home and actually do their researching rather than making a physical trip into my office. Um, and we still will get paid for this. Um, we pay a yearly fee of a hundred and sixty dollars a month. Well, it's not a yearly. We pay a hundred and sixty dollars a month for the use of them with a five-year contract. Um, and then we get paid a dollar for each page that a researcher, um, takes from the website. So we still have some income coming in from it. We didn't lose it. We're gonna lose the four dollars an hour vault charge that I usually charge when they come in and they sit there for any length of time. Um, yeah, um, it's a very quick turnaround. We just found out we got the grant. I've had four phone calls and about four emails today. They want us up and running and live by October thirteenth. So it is a lot of, um, migrating indexes and stuff I've already had scanned because I've kept all of our records up to date. I've already had them digitized just for preservation purposes. But now, since I've done all that and it was used for preservation purposes, they're actually gonna migrate that into digitizing it for the record searches. So it, it, it's paying for itself. It's doing what it should have done, but even more.
Could you make that deadline, Kim?
We have to because the grant requires us that by November, I have to have five years from now back five years online, ready to go. And then I have until December to use whatever money's left in the grant to actually go as far back as I can. So built into the grant, I've also asked, um, for an assistant to work on, um, an amount of two thousand dollars to bring my assistant in, both my assistants, and scan as many documents as I can and using those funds to pay for it. So it's not actually coming out of the town's funds from the grant. Um, and if I could get a forty-year search, that's typically what, um, um, researchers like are forty-year searches. If I can get forty years online, um, that's gonna be awesome. Um, I'd like to get everything from our surveys to our PTTRs, um, anything that a researcher would need, I'd like to have it available. So, um, I've asked Michelle and Wendy to come in and also do it because it's been rough at the office just with taxes and this happening and it's in the elections. It's been a lot lately. That's about it for updates. Oh, oh, no. Sullivan Powers was here, uh, last week, um, our outside auditor. So Jenna was here. Typically, they like usually to book Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but they've only stayed on a Monday and a Tuesday. This year, they booked a Monday and a Tuesday and they only stayed a Monday. Um, I was able to in August, send everything, July and August electronically to them of their request. It's usually about forty items that they're requesting of me. Sent all of that electronic, so they did a lot of that behind the scenes. And then she comes in for the day and just kind of picks our brain and asks us questions and our internal controls and, and pulls out, um, invoices, random invoices that she's got to check. Um, and she was able to do it all in one day. Um, I, I think it's going really well and that's, um, a lot of that has to do with we've moved from a modified, um, uh, cash accrual to cash. So, so that's a good part of it, too. Yeah.
Uh, Kim, did, did I see that the school had a surplus, uh, and it was accredited to this year?
Yeah, that's, that, that's a whole, another thing I was dealing with last week is I had brought up at one of our pre-town meetings that there were still funds left over from the AthGraft School. Um, it happened to have been an AthGraft account. It was a Grafton account and a Grafton money market account. Um, all three accounts totaled ninety-two thousand dollars. So, um, when I brought it up to Jack in February and I brought it up at the meeting, um, they made it sound as though that was gonna be, oh yeah, that's already been considered and Westminster has so, such and such amount of money. Um, I sense, I've not seen any action on the account when I'm online. And then I started getting dormant account notices from the bank. So I brought it to the new business manager's attention, Flora. I was sending it to Teresa. She was out of the office, so I moved it to Flora. Um, Flora being brand new, um, we talked, um, I gave her a little bit of background. She got right on it. Um, I did ask, you know, is this gonna be designated specifically to Grafton's budget, Grafton's portion and then Grafton? She said most definitely, even though we've missed two budget processings as, uh, without it. So she's gonna bring it up to the board. I'm not really sure where it's gonna go from there, but they are fully where Chris Pat, the, the Select Board and Jack, that yes, there is ninety-two thousand dollars um, sitting there waiting to be used.
So that means that we're raising ninety-two thousand dollars this year, that if that was credited to us, we wouldn't have to.
Nah, sure. Yeah. That, that was kind of my point. Not only was it for the year prior, but the vote that we just had in June, it was not applied to that vote either. Um, it, of course, they're going through an audit, too, that I'm not even sure if the audit's been complete, but I know as of this summer, they were still in the midst of an audit. So who gets the money or what or how we all ended up? I, I don't even know if they really know right at this point. But somehow Athens Grafton had a balance, I want to say of like forty-seven thousand in it. It was an AthGraft account. So obviously some of that is Athens and not just Grafton. And then Grafton had an account of like thirty-five thousand in it and then another money market of like three thousand.
So next year, we will have to raise ninety-two thousand dollars less.
I don't, yeah, you'll have to, yeah, we'll have to talk to the school board, yeah, and how it plays out and where it gets allocated and, and if that's in fact true. I mean, did we end the year with a deficit? Um, supposedly not, but I don't know. I'm not the treasurer any longer for the school since the new merger.
But just with the school taxes going up so much, it'd been nice to have that ninety-two thousand in this year.
Yeah, I can't disagree with that for sure. And, um, I don't know if anybody had heard on the news about the, um, divorce of the merger of one of the schools um, recently, and they're wondering if it's going to, you know, create a trend of more schools coming forward and wanting to divorce out of the mergers. Um, again, it's something you might want to talk to our school board chair, Jack, Jack Ryer about, um, you know, are we gonna follow suit and move forward? I, I don't know. I haven't had the time to bring it up to him.
Um, I, I did get an email from Jack and, and, um, and somebody else. I sent back and I said, I, you need to pursue it. And I guess Jack was in touch with Carolyn Partridge.
Yeah.
And apparently there's a loophole in the law. And the, 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 the thing I read, the thing was told to me was, and Jack said it, we have to act quickly because once the legislature comes back in in January, they could close this loophole. So if, if, if they wanna, if, if they wanna, if their recommendation is, is for us to dissolve this mess already, then we should, we should act quickly. I also understand from Carolyn Partridge that the fix that they want to do is actually worse than what they have now. So somebody needs to, you know, I, I'm assuming Jack or somebody is, needs to be on top of this. And I, I discussed it with Bill this morning and I guess it's not, do we have a, do we, the Select Board, have a role in this? Or is it strictly the school board? I don't know. I mean, we own the building. Uh, it, it involves our tax base here. So what happens? And, and these are the questions I think some, we have to get answered. And maybe what we do is the next Select Board meeting, we have to bring Jack or somebody who knows what's going on in here.
Yeah, I, I've already asked, uh, after talking to Jill this morning, I've already asked the Reslason three different questions. That's one of them, to, to find out, uh, where we stand on things. And I have not heard back from him yet, but, but it was late this afternoon, so.
Yeah. And one of the questions raised me is that, is this a school board decision? Is it a Select Board decision? Or does the town have to vote on this? I don't know.
All good points, Joe.
So, but anyway, I think we all have to be aware of it. And, and, um, I didn't see anything in the latest legislative news about this, but, um, I'm sure, Carol, maybe we need to contact Carolyn Partridge. She's certainly in favor of it, I know that, of course, of the Wyndham situation. So, anyway. I wish I could tell you more and then there is nothing to know other than that is a loophole and we have to make a decision whether we want to in or out. Can we get out from West, with, and I understand also Westminster does, wants to pull out as well. So, who knows? Okay, anything else on, uh, with Kim? You all set? Anybody got any questions for Kim?
Uh, just curious, Kim, did I understand you? You're gonna do the voting at the Brick Church House now?
Yes.
So you won't need the firehouse?
No, I won't need the firehouse. Um, we were concerned about whether it be storming or the large doors being open when it's cold.
Yep, okay.
So we won't. Um, oh, eventually, uh, Select Board, um, sometime in the next, um, couple of weeks, I'm gonna send you, start the budget processing. So I'll send your worksheets to you. Um, and then, um, whatever Joe's got or you guys have planned on how you're gonna meet or how you want to work on them, it's up to you, but at least I'll distribute them in an email to you so you'll have those worksheets to get started on. You have plenty of time to ask any questions, okay?
Good.
Okay. Anything else with Kim? Okay, let's move on to the next one, which is the Brick, the Brick Meeting House. Um, that was put on there for, I guess, for also the, it's gonna be used for the election if it was approved by the BCA. And also the, um, the Brick House, the Brick Meeting House Commission, who has, has done all the work for it, uh, as, as you know, offered the building to be used as a church. And the, the community church, uh, for whatever their reason was, decided not to. So the building sits there and there's a great desire for the commission to, to let the town use this building for anything they want to use it for, i.e. Select Board meetings, budget meetings, uh, forums, uh, anything you want. And it is, it is, it is an asset, uh, it doesn't, it's not owned by the town, but it's an asset that could be used. And, um, so I just wanted to, to let you know that, uh, that is available for, um, for use by the town for anything they want. And one of my thoughts, and this is just a thought, and you can certainly discuss this, is that I would prefer personally, me, to have these budget meetings, um, in person rather than over, over in, in Zoom or team. And we could do that, uh, obviously, we could do that in the, in the town hall, except we don't have any handicap accessibility. Um, and then we need, then we would have to have a camera so that, because we have to have a public meeting and anybody who wanted to attend the budget meetings, either in person or in Zoom or Microsoft Team, could do that. And, um, the Brick Church could be used or Brick Meeting House could be, could be one, uh, place that we could do the budget negotiations with. Um, or we could do it at the town hall without the handicap like we did it in the last two years. So it's, it's off a discussion, uh, but it's certainly, um, available for whatever the town, uh, wants to use it for, with no charge.
I think that's a great idea.
So I, I don't think we have to, I don't think we have to decide the meeting place today for the budget. I would think about it and we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting and we can decide if we want to do it. Um, I have a, I have a projector that I haven't used in twenty years, um, that could be used, um, by the town, I could give it to the town so that, um, they could, you know, you could have the Zoom meetings on that. And, and, um, Bill has a couple of ideas. We could, you know, have the blackboard or the whiteboard and various other things. So why don't we kind of think about it and we'll put it on the agenda for next week and decide, or next meeting, and decide where we want, how we want to handle the budget negotiations.
Okay. So I have a little different thought that I'd like people to consider between now and next meeting. It's the, the likely question people are gonna raise is you've just spent a whole bunch of money doing restoration work in the town hall and now you're gonna move your meetings to the red brick. Why didn't you do that? Why didn't we think about that beforehand? Um, I, I, I'm kind of more in favor of the town hall. I understand the second story is not handicap, but it doesn't really matter because, um, more than likely, we would have our meeting there and the publics would participate by, uh, MS Teams. And so they wouldn't be coming up the stairs anyways, but that's just my thought.
I, I have, personally, I think both places will work. I just don't know the legality of, of having a handicap. That's my only concern. And other than that, we did it for the last two years, so I guess we could continue to do it. I, I'd be happy to do it there as well. But what, what do we think about this and, and we'll put it on the agenda for next week? Uh, Kim, you're gonna, you're gonna send out the, the budget stuff, what, in a couple of weeks?
In the next couple.
Okay.
Can I also point out that, uh, Al, I, I understand some of your concerns, but the restoration portion of it, the building, what's being done, needs to be done, whether we're gonna hold meetings there or not. So a lot of this whole restoration is like dire need, just to keep the building safe in it.
I understand that, but the general public that hasn't been keeping track of everything, it's a pre-logical question to say, why are you spending the money on town hall and then you're going over there? I understand it, but not everybody will.
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking the radon protection and the insulation and all, all that is just not letting a building deteriorate.
Right.
Okay, if, if we don't have anything else, can we move on to, um, the number eight, the Village Park? Everybody okay with? Okay, Alan, you wanna, you wanna do this here, since you have been working on it?
Um, I was there today. Uh, Tim Morton was trying to finish up his marking. He did send a, a offer, which I received and forwarded to Joe and Bill and asked to share. Did anybody take him up on the offer for Friday to go see what he was doing?
I didn't see the offer.
I, I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it.
Uh, I, I mailed it Thursday morning, I think it was, to Bill and Joe, so I don't know where it went after that, but anyways.
I didn't get it, Alan.
I didn't get it.
I didn't email it to everybody. I sent it to two people with, to share it. That Tim, Tim made the offer, if somebody wanted to go up and see what he was doing, um. I told him I didn't think, I, I couldn't speak for everybody, but I kind of figured that we've told him to go and do his professional duty, and we kind of trusted him to do that, but anyways. What's that?
You know, it wouldn't hurt. I mean, there's no reason that that should not have been sent to everybody. I, I just presumed that it didn't want to be sent for everybody.
I didn't see.
I, I don't know. I'm looking at it right now. I don't know why it was just sent to Joe and I.
Well, it is, it's a secret, is it? It isn't any secret.
No, it isn't any secret. It isn't a secret.
Replant it.
I asked it to be shared, so next time I'll send it to everybody.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Suzanne.
Thank you. Uh, just wondering if such a, a tour might also be open to the public?
It could have been if I would have, if I would have known that it was just that. I didn't think of even sending it on. I could have sent it to the Grafton residents.
That was not his intention. It was his intention to make that offer to the select board. It wasn't meant to be a public showing. And I'm just honoring what he offered.
All right, Alan, what time, what, would you imagine that would, uh, meeting would take place up there?
That was, it was an offer, he was gonna be working there on Friday, this past Friday. So he, he sent the thing, I, I'm in Island Pond, and I read the email. I sent it to Bill and Joe asking, okay?
This past Friday?
Yes, yes.
Well, we're late.
Yeah, and I didn't see it, so.
So, so I assumed it got shared, and was wondering if anybody took advantage of it. I wished I hadn't brought it up. Sorry. So, this morning, I was there, he was finishing up marking. Um, he commented on the work that's been done on the landing, and how, um, how much he feels that has, um, it was a good call on our part to do that. He says that, uh, really should help us in what people are willing to pay for the product there. When they don't have to go and do the landing, it's already in there for them. Um, it means they could start a job in the middle of the winter without having to do preparation. Um, it should generate more money because it saves them some money. So good investment on our part. It doesn't have the dollar value or proposed dollar value. Uh, he should have that gener, he should have some better idea in a couple, couple, three days, um, of what the marking should, uh, generate. And then, of course, it all depends on, once we put it out to bid, what people are actually willing to pay for it. But he'll have some idea what market prices are. The site clearing and, and the work Danny's been doing, um, we should be cutting the last few trees probably Thursday. And those are some sawlog trees that we've worked around. We wanted to cut them after the, oh, preparation was done, so that they would be fresh and not hanging around. Those should generate money for us because they'll, they'll take them over to, uh, Peter Durgan. We probably have a truckload or so of firewood that we suggested that we, once the sawlogs are removed, so there's no confusion, and that people don't cut up sawlogs for firewood, um, our idea is that we would, uh, we would accept bids from people for the firewood, and they need to remove it, say, like, by the first of November. So that it's out of there, it's not there in the wintertime if people, if they do wind up logging this winter. So that's something to think about.
But, but before you go any further, Alan, the question is, how do you want to proceed with this bidding thing? Because do you want to just only run it in the Grafton News? Or do you want to, to advertise in the Shopper or the, or Mont Journal, whichever, what it is?
Uh, that's not only my decision. I guess that's up to the select board.
I know.
Yeah, but I have to feel that there's enough interest in the town of Grafton, and that's a product that's coming off from land in Grafton. Seems like we should keep, just do it in-house, in Gra, in the town of Graff.
Well, it's, it's important that we make this decision because the, um, the Grafton News deadline is the 25th, I think.
Right, I understand.
If you're gonna run, if, if, we need to just make a motion or decide how you want to handle it.
My idea is we have Bill write an article for the Grafton News saying that we would take bids from the people of Grafton. Anybody that's interested to purchase that, those firewood logs, probably 20-foot lengths of firewood. Uh, they can pick them up and move them to their own location. Whether they hire a log truck to move them for them, or if they have to commit themselves to move it. What I don't want to happen is for somebody say, oh yeah, I want the firewood. They go there, they cut up a little bit, and they never finish it, and it's in the way. So we want somebody to just go through with it, get it out of the way.
Alan, what's the volume? How much is there?
I think that there's a log truck, maybe, maybe, uh, maybe, possibly two log trucks, loads of, of 20-foot.
Well, how would you bid in? How, how would you bid on this?
People could go and look at it. They can determine themselves how much is there and what they're willing to pay for it.
Okay.
And, and we can, uh, accept the high bid, or, you know, like most of our contracts, we, we say, we, we can refuse, but we could accept the high bid or whichever one we want.
Alan, would it, would it be, would it be cleaner if you just put a figure out there at $150? I don't, and I don't know what a log length cord of, would it work nowadays? If you just put out a figure and say, there it is, pay us $200, and it's yours.
All right, but what if, but what if you and I both come forward with that amount of money, then what?
We can submit the numbers of cords that you have.
I, I, I don't want to get in the position of, I'm telling them there's 10 cords there, and they get there and there's only eight, or I said there's 10 and there's 15. Uh, I would prefer, here's the pile of wood, what are you willing to pay for it? And let people decide what the value is themselves. And it's all or nothing. I don't want to, you buy part, I buy part, somebody else buys part. I just, I just like to lump sum it.
Yes.
That's my proposal.
So you want somebody to just go out and just pick up the pile and take it away?
Yeah, exactly. And if they want to share it, that's their own business. They can share it on their own property.
Yeah, yeah, if they want to go in with a couple buddies, or father, son, or whatever, that's fine. But what I don't want is for Danny Taylor to take it, or somebody, you know, John, somebody else to take it, and they say, oh, well, so-and-so should have, you know, I just want it to be clean, that we had a process. If, if, if one of us happens to pay the most amount of money for it, we should be able to buy it.
No, I thought you were gonna go after, somebody wanted three cords, somebody else wanted five cords. Okay, and that makes sense.
I don't want to get into that.
Yes, that, that makes sense.
So somebody want to make a motion so we can, um, get this thing?
You know, this is all well and good. You haven't identified the wood or trees or anything that you're selling. Are they all gonna be marked? Are they gonna have a red line on them? What?
It, when we take the sawlogs away, it will be the pile of wood that's left. That's why I want the sawlogs out of there first. So, so they're, what's left is what's available.
Okay, and where is that?
Right this minute, they're on the access road and in the, in the, what's gonna become the parking area. When we're done, it will be a pile. Currently, it's spread out now.
It, it'll be at the, at the landing or the parking area or whatever.
Probably.
Parking area.
Not if I'm gonna write the thing for Thursday. You're gonna tell me exactly where it's gonna be and what they're gonna be bidding on right now, so I can write it for Thursday.
Yeah, and we have to have a date, too, of when, when they can view it. Because you can't have somebody go up there tomorrow and look at it, because.
I mean, you can vote on it tonight, and then, then, then Alan, you gotta write it up and give it to me in time for me to get it to her on Thursday. That's all.
Yeah.
I would leave it till the next meet now.
We could do that, too.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Let's, uh, let's just pass it to the next meeting.
But if we leave it to the next meeting, it'll be too late for the, won't it be too late for the, uh, Grafton News?
We'll go in this, it'll go into November, then you're already too late.
Why does it have to wait? Why don't we just make a vote on it? And Alan knows what's going on. I just, I'll make a, I'll make a motion now that, uh, we go along with Alan's suggestion about having the, uh, wood that's already cut, it's gonna be in a pile. Uh, somebody goes up and makes a bid on, on the total pile of firewood that's available.
What I, what I think would make it work the best is we, we determine that's gonna be the process, and I'll talk to Bill, we'll figure out a date, and so we'll have a showing. And whatever we pick for a day for the showing, people can come and look at it. I'll meet with them. Here's the pile of wood. They decide what they're willing to pay for it, or they don't want it. And they have to have the bid in by such and such a date.
Sure. I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Suzanne, you had something to say that you?
I, I can, it's, it doesn't pertain to the, um, to the firewood, so I could, uh, if it was your pleasure, go and make my comment after the vote.
Okay. Um, okay, so all in favor, all in favor?
Kathy, you sec, Kathy, you second the motion. Who made it? Stan?
Stan.
Yes.
So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, Suzanne, yes, can I?
Thank you, thank you.
But it has to be, it has to stay on with the agenda. I, I don't know what, what your comment is gonna be.
No, no, my comment has to do with the, I'm, 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 I just need some clarification about, uh, the marking of the trees. I thought that's what, um, I thought, Al, I thought that's what you said Tim did on Friday?
He, he did part of it on Friday, but he didn't finish it, so he was up there finishing it this morning.
Suzanne, the process of marking is a long process. It's not, it's not done in an hour.
Okay, uh, that, what I'm wondering is, uh, I remember, Al, when you organized a tour of the marking of the logging operation near the town garage. And several of us met on that tour, and I found that very meaningful. And I would, uh, you know, I don't think I'm just speaking for myself. I think there would be other people, especially those of us who are very fond of the Village Park and very interested in it, um, to understand, uh, what logging is going to be done there. Um, this is not in any way to be misconstrued as not supportive of the project. I'm very supportive of the project. I'm just wondering how we can, um, inform ourselves, uh, more about what's going on there.
Well, well, Suzanne, Al, Al, if you agree, why don't we, why don't we address this at, at the next meeting, since it's not on the agenda? And, and give us a, a chance to how, how, you, you conducted, somebody conducted it originally at the town garage, so, um,
Yeah, yeah.
I wasn't a selectman then. I don't know how you did it, um, so maybe you can let us know, and we can talk about it next meeting?
Well, the next meeting would be good because, um, we'll have some numbers as far as, um,
Okay.
value. You know, Tim should have his numbers by then.
Okay. Bill, you want to make a note of that so that we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
I've got it, thanks.
There's only one problem. There's only one problem with the next meeting. The next meeting will be seven? No.
It should be the fifth.
Yeah, it'll be the fifth of October. If I'm, if I'm really lucky, I'll be back by then, and, and we'll be able to address it at that meeting. Um, it's very possible that I'll still be in the Northeast Kingdom.
Well, Alan, the trees aren't gonna go anywhere, and the marks are, so we do it the following meeting. I mean, we can discuss that.
Uh, I, I just want to be upfront that I, I hate to agree to it, and then, oh, well, he said he'd be here, and now he isn't, so. But, um, I got a commitment to be in the Northeast Kingdom, and it may last for a week.
Okay, well, why don't we, well, we'll, you let us know, Alan, and we can put it on the agenda for this to the next. How's that?
Okay.
Okay? Okay, um, the next thing is the, um, did everybody get the, uh, the edits from the planning commission? Um, we don't, we're not voting on this, um, but we have to let the planning commission know if there is any issues, or you don't agree with it, or whatever. Um, this is, they, they have to, they have to formalize this, and they have a complete process to do. All we need to make sure tonight, so that they can proceed, is that if everybody agrees with these changes, or edits that they have done. So is there anybody who has a question about any of them? Alan and I looked at them. It, it was what we had met and what we brought to the board. So I think, I mean, I think they, they actually did accomplish what, um, we asked them to do. Obviously, there were other things, they made other changes that really did not affect, um, the, to the issues that were at hand.
Sure. They accomplished everything that we talked about, and actually did some more things than we talked about. And the more things that they did is probably an issue, is gonna raise an issue. If you look on the second page.
I don't want to get to discussion because that's not what this meeting is for. If you're gonna go into discussion, we have to, you can do that at a public hearing.
Yeah, we can't discuss.
Otherwise.
This is only, this meeting is only for us to say, and if we don't approve, don't like it, then we don't give it to them.
No, and, and all they want that for is to see where they stand. Because you can go to their planning commission meeting and change anything you want in 30 days when they have the public hearing. Or you can go tomorrow night and make suggestions. But I'm, I, but I'm afraid that, that you guys start discussing it, everybody's gonna think you had a, had a public hearing on the town plan, which this is not designed to do. That's all I'm saying. You guys can do what you want.
This is a very touchy situation because we really don't, this is not our bellywhack. We, we made a suggestion to them, they came back, and they want to know from us, is, did they do the suggestions that we did? That's all we should do.
I would say this proposal, uh, agrees with the suggestions that we made.
Does everybody agree with that?
I, I didn't see any issues that, uh, I, I would have been concerned about.
Kathy, you okay with that?
Yeah, I am.
And John?
Yep, okay.
So we don't have, we don't have to make any motion, and we just, we just can agree now that Bill will send this back to the, to Dave, uh, so that they can proceed with their process.
Should, should we tell them that we reviewed it and, and we
Yeah.
Don't have any prob, you know,
Yeah.
some kind of a favorable endorsement?
Right. Assuming Bill will send it back that the select board agrees, thank you for making the edits. Please proceed. I mean, that's, that's how I.
That's fine.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, the, the next item is the, is the fire pond, and, um, I just wanted to, um, what? what happened is you, you, so everybody I think has seen the contract.
I know it's the water.
Oh, sorry. I missed one.
We, no, no, we took the fire pond out there. There's nothing to discuss on the public.
Okay, so why is it on here?
It is on.
Yeah, an old one.
Okay.
I don't have it.
All right, the, uh, Kat, uh, Suzanne, you, you wanted to have discuss about this here.
Thank you very much for timing the agenda. I am representing the Water and Wastewater Study Commission. Um, and as you all know, we serve at the pleasure of the select board. Stan is actually, uh, an ex officio member of our commission. And tonight, I, I just wanted to bring up three points to you quickly. Um, first of all, we are ready to begin the next phase of our study, um, which is to gather data about current state wastewater management in the village. And to that end, we have developed a survey for property owners in the village. And we've had an iterative process. We've really worked hard to make this survey, uh, yield the results we need, uh, and also make it simple for people to take. So, um, I, we, the commission would like to announce this survey, um, in the October issue of the Grafton News. The survey itself would launch in November. So of course, we didn't want the select board to read about this in the Grafton News. We wanted to give you a heads up about it, um, first. Uh, with the, um, suggestion, um, that we hope you'll agree to, that the commission would do a more thorough briefing with you at one of the October meetings on, um, the status of our project now that would precede the actual survey. But obviously those meetings would not, that meeting would not precede the announcement in the Grafton News. So just wanted to ask for your buy-in to go ahead and run that article, which would announce the November survey.
Does anybody have any issues with this?
No.
No.
I don't.
Do, I, I'm not sure we need a formal motion, do we?
No.
We're not doing it. They're doing it.
Yeah, so if, if there's no, if there's no objection, then, then hurry forward.
Great. Thank you very much.
All righty. Okay. Uh, other business? Do we have any other business?
Did you, uh, did you take off town hall work on the neck, on the new agenda also?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know if you wanted it on or anything. Um.
No, it's just on my list. I didn't know if it was taken off. I got, I got it on the agenda.
Yeah, no, it was taken off. There's nothing to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, I think once you complete the project, then you can let us know what's going on, but.
No, I, it was just on this one.
Okay. Well, it's on mine. Okay. So if there's no other business, do we have any public comment?
Uh, Joe?
Yeah?
Yeah. I, I guess I'd do it under other business or public comment, either one. At, at one point, you were going to write a monthly, our, a, a, kind of a newsletter from the select board to the people of Grafton through the Grafton News. Um, I, I know it hasn't happened. I know we've had pandemic. There's, it's, things have been sort of different. Um, but I wonder if kind of keeping in mind with Suzanne's thoughts on the village park, if it might be worth, um, something to address what we're doing.
Okay, Alan.
Throw it out for what it's worth.
I have a note here. I'm, I'm planning to do a chairman's report for this coming issue. Okay?
Okay.
And I know that I, I had been remiss, but it's, things have been kind of like a little screwy here, um, and, and.
I understand.
But I want to get back to it. So I will do that.
Okay. Yep.
Any other comment? If not, um, the next meeting is October 5th at, uh, at 6 o'clock, um, via team Zoom. And, uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
Can I, before we do that?
Go ahead.
Um, Bill, question for Bill?
Yep.
Um, have you seen anything from the governor that has come out that would allow us or, or changes things for our, our meetings? Or do you, everything you've seen so far, we should continue with the format we're using?
There's no change. And he, he continued it until October 15th. That's what I, that's what I thought, but I was just checking. Yep.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Okay, Stan and Kathy?
Second.
Say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you all for attending and have a good week.